Good evening. This meeting of the Mannheim Township School Board is now called to order. Welcome to everyone here in person and those joining us online. In addition to live stream, both audio and video are being recorded. Recorded nurture and challenge for success is our district's mission. It serves as a reminder of our intent to enable every Mannheim Township student to learn, grow, and thrive. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For announcements this evening, I want to share that members of our community are encouraged to participate in board meetings in person or via them online. To support transparency and community engagement, recordings of our meetings can now be watched afterwards on the district's YouTube channel. The entire board can also be reached by sending emails to boardsecretary@mtwp.net. And that will get to all board members. The board met an executive session on October 23rd following our facilities committee meeting to consult with attorneys to discuss business which if conducted in public would violate the lawful privilege or lead to the disclosure of confidential information. The board also met an executive session at 5:30 PM today to receive information from our solicitor about board policies and protocols. No deliberations occurred. Now that the work of the law firms engaged by the board last March has concluded, an update will soon be posted on the district website that provides information on key findings, recommendations, and next steps from their work. Fourth and last announcement I have tonight is that the state budget has passed. I want to briefly acknowledge and celebrate the passage of Pennsylvania's state budget. Its completion provides much-needed stability for school districts and allows Mannheim Township to move forward with clearer financial footing. At the same time, the significant delay created uncertainty for districts across the Commonwealth, including ours, and underscores the importance of timely state action to support students, educators, and communities. We appreciate the work of all who advocate for strong public education, and we will continue to plan responsibly now that the budget is in place. I think we're going to hear more about that next week from Mrs. Robinson. Thanks. All right. Now, we are onto item number two, which is Mannheim Township Community Comments on Action Items Listed in Section Number Four. So residents, taxpayers, district employees, and students are all welcome and encouraged to participate. The board will engage in discussion but will provide follow-up if needed. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a commenters card for the board secretary to collect. Limit your remarks to five minutes related only to items in our voting section for tonight. And share your full name before you begin. You know what? I think there's a wrong script, so I just want to back up and say the public comment period is about anything for the board tonight. If I have that correct? Oh, we do have that item, so yes, it's correct. Don't trust my own script. So just for that item tonight, which is we have one voting item, which is we'll be voting on accepting the resignation of Dr. Terrence Henderson. So are there any who would like to make comments this evening?
Good evening, Dr. Jessica McConnell.
Good evening.
Dr. Henderson, I want to thank you for your service on the school board, for the time and energy you've given to our school district and to our community. As a member of that community, I have appreciated your quiet leadership, your thoughtful engagement, and your willingness to ask the tough questions. Your voice and your presence will surely be missed, and I wish you all the best. Thank you, Dr. Henderson.
Do we have others that would like to make comments this evening? All right, thank you, Dr. McConnell. All right, on to item three in our agenda is for approval of agenda or agenda modification. Is there a motion to either approve or modify the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to modify the agenda to delete item 6A since we have a budget.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Tense. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Now we're at item number four, which is a recommendation to approve the resignation of Dr. Terrence Henderson, Director. Is there a motion to approve?
No one wants to approve it, too.
Mrs. Ramon, is there a second? Mr. Grunter. Now I'd like to begin discussion, because I know we're going to have some discussion. I'd like to begin it with Ms. Lamb.
I'm so thankful to have met Dr. Henderson through our work on the MTWP board first, and then later on on the school board. And from day one, we shared a vision of creating an inclusive, all-in-all environment for every student and family, no matter their backgrounds and upbringing, making sure that all students have the opportunity to thrive here at Mannheim Township, and for every voice of representation to be heard and honored. Dr. Henderson understands how educational equity uplifts student opportunity and achievement, and that is about all voice that we're going to miss on this board. It's been such an honor working beside you toward that mission. Thank you for your leadership and your service on the school board. Thank you for your guidance as a colleague, fan, and friend. And thank you for your heart and passion to speak up for those who may not be able to because you understand that every voice matters, and we're going to truly need it, too.
Do we have other discussion? Mr. Boldezar.
Yes, I am very disappointed in you, Dr. Henderson. I appreciate your passionate voice, spoken in your way, advocating for all the things that are important to you and so many others in this district. I think that independent thought delivered in the straightforward factual way, I will greatly miss, and I know this board will miss. And I wish you all the best as you move forward, but I will miss you here as part of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Boldezar. Are there others? Mr. Evans.
Dr. Henderson, it's been a pleasure serving with you these last two years. You have gone to know each other on the board, didn't know each other previous to that, but really appreciate you, your perspective, and yeah, just able to frankly ask good questions, which sometimes can be difficult to do on a board. We'll be stepping off at the same time. So yeah, thank you for your service, and blessings on your journey ahead.
There's not a lot to add. I agree with everything that's been said. Your conscientious accounting of detail and your ability to ask a question that I should have thought to ask you that way, I just appreciated it always. I remember that I was here the night that you walked up to the mic for the first time, and that you would take that desire to serve and move it forward to be on the board and to work to take the seat on the board. I've always appreciated that in you, and you've stepped up in that manner. Love getting you doing your voice, phenomenal, and I do wish you luck in everything.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Yes, it's been great working with you on the cold side of the room, as we all know over here. But I appreciate your self-devenir with everyone. It's very much appreciated, and it will be fun to get into the next adventure in your life, I'm sure, as you depart from the area, but wish you luck.
Mr. Grunter.
Yeah, Dr. Henderson, I'll share and echo what all our other colleagues have shared about you. I'll also just say you're kind in times when it's not been easy to be kind. And you conduct yourself with a clarity of purpose and vision that I see from you that seems like you know who you are, you know who you're about, know what you're about, you know who you're accountable to, and you don't stray from that. And I think that is an admirable quality that I have long respected in you. You know, from the campaign trail when we first met to this day now, I've appreciated your wit, your humor, your clarity, your work ethic. I highly admire it. I wish you and your family all the best, and I know you'll continue to do great things. Thank you.
Dr. Payd Happy.
Dr. Henderson, during my hiring process, I want to remind you that you pushed me intensely on making sure that I continue to be the voice for the voiceless, and I'm committed to that work, even with you gone, so thank you. Yeah.
Any other remarks before I wrap this up? All right. Oh, yes, you go right ahead, Dr. Henderson. You haven't really resigned yet.
Let's see, I, um, I have my birthday was on November 1st, but I won't tell you how old I am. Old enough to have a 21-year-old, so you can do that. And as an old person, I'm not really into AI, but I got on ChatGPT, and I typed in a prompt to give me to produce a farewell speech. All that to say, I'm not using it. So my wife and I, when we were pregnant with our oldest, 21 years ago, moved to Mannheim Township. I was at Harrisburg Hospital, she was at Reading Hospital. And Mannheim Township has just been a great place to raise kids, and they say that about a lot of places, you know, across the country. But we really had a great experience here. I appreciate going through the different schools from Mrs. Mack in Buchra, I don't know if anyone remembers her, she was our first principal, to the middle school, to Landis-Land to the middle school, and then to high school. And when I was brave enough to shakily come to the mic after, you know, trying to participate in this wonderful community that we all have and should appreciate after coaching boys' basketball, being drafted to coach boys' basketball because there was a need. Sometimes you just step into the need, and I am glad Cindy stepped into the need. I'm glad our newly-elected officials stepped up. I'm sure I know they'll do a great job. I appreciate the kind words. I have lived in Mannheim Township 21 years consecutively, and there is no other place in my life that I've lived that long. So, you know, this has been home, and it will always reflect, kind of, in my memories. And being a part of this board has been a great experience. It has pushed me to find my voice, and I love advocating for the people who don't have voices. We suffered through a spat of self-harm with our students because, I think, in part because of the politics that was going on in the country, and it seems like we are revisiting those same issues. So I will be listening. It sounds like we are all in a good space as far as advocating for those among in our community who need a voice. And I'm going to stop babbling. I hope I pushed Chenak to pay hefty. She has been a wonderful addition. I am going to stop getting work with you, I'm sure you will be great. I will leave it there. Thank you all for your patience.
And before I call for the vote, I would like to say that, Dr. Henderson, you don't know what you meant to me personally as a scared mom watching online in the pandemic when you were appointed for your first stint in board service. When I saw that a physician was appointed to the board, I worked in healthcare and was working on the front lines and with a low kid in school, and I was very relieved and very pleased and very gratified and very calm by your calm leadership. And I appreciate your persistence and your advocacy and your accountability to your constituents and your reminder to all of us that we're accountable to. Thank you for being a model and showing us the way. I'm full of gratitude for that, and I wish you well in your next chapter. And with that, I will say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries, and we have a gift for you from the district. All right, now we are at item number five on our agenda, which is a discussion regarding the process for replacement of Dr. Henderson. Not that we will be replacing him, but filling the board vacancy. So quick, I know. Got to get ready for rapid change. So I'd just like to share that the process will be open, will be transparent, and we encourage folks to apply for this board vacancy. You'll apply by sending our board secretary, boardsecretary@mtwp.net, a letter of interest and resume by Friday, November 28th at noon. If you would like to be part of the process, you will set time aside on your schedule to be interviewed. Public interviews will be held the evening of December 1st. Monday, December 1st will be the night of our regular board meeting. We'll likely tentatively set a time of 7:00 PM for those interviews to begin. We'll have some board business prior to that. All of the details will be posted on the district website. The board will vote the night of December 4th. Candidates who are applying for appointment to the board do not have to attend on the night that we vote unless they would like to. And then their board service will begin, and they will be sworn in the evening of December 11th, which will be the next regular board meeting. So set aside the nights of December 1st and 11th if you're interested in joining us on the board. You can contact any board member here to ask what board service is like and what their experiences, we're all happy to talk about it. And that letter of interest and resume will be due by the day after Thanksgiving at noon, which is the business day before December 1st. All right. Does any board member have anything to add about the process or any questions? This is a discussion item, so feel free.
Could you clarify the term that's remaining?
Yes.
Anyone knows?
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. It's half the commitment of a regular term, which is four years. So it would be for the remainder of Dr. Henderson's term, which would be the Monday after the next election, which is December 2027. So the first Monday of December 2027 is when the term would end. It would start at this December 11th, so to your term. Any other discussion, questions, concerns, comments? Mr. Grunter.
I'll just, thank you, Ms. Oberg. I would say I hope we do get a broad set of applicants. I certainly, you know, think that it's going to be impossible to fill Dr. Henderson's shoes, but I personally, you know, am thinking about someone who, you know, first and foremost is going to be dedicated to the operations of this district and committed to that. And, you know, I don't think there's any sort of traditional background that's required or anything like that. You know, I think lived experience is very much as valuable as any other type of experience, academic or otherwise, in my opinion. And so certainly, you know, my door is open to anyone who has questions about what it is to serve, and certainly, you know, I'll speak for myself there and would be happy to have coffee or schedule a phone call with anybody if they have questions. But don't be shy. If you're not sure, apply, you can always say no later. We would, I hope we get a broad set of interested people.
Thank you, Mr. Grunter. Thank you, Ms. Lamb. All right, if there's no other discussion or comments on that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which will not be 6A, will be now 6B. So 6B is a recommendation to approve the contract with Mile Two Consulting LLC for School-Based Access Program, consulting services for Mannheim Township School District. Mrs. Novak, Director of Student Services, and Mrs. Metz, Director of Special Education, and Mrs. Robinson, thank you all, and welcome.
Thank you very much, and good evening to the school board members and to Dr. Payd Happy. This evening, we are presenting to you seeking approval for this contract, this partnership with a consulting firm to be able to expand and optimize our current reimbursement systems. So overall, just to do a review of medical access, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, along with other governmental department agencies, support districts within the state to be able to seek reimbursement for services that are designated on an individualized basis through individualized education programs, which are known as IDPs. Billable services include a very long list of related services that are on your slide here tonight. The ones that are highlighted, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech and language therapy are services currently that Mannheim Township seeks reimbursement for, but there are other things such as social work services, psychological services, transportation, personal care, and also nursing services. We started this programming in the fall of 2022, and from there, we hired an administrative assistant. Part-time of her work is done through medical access by sending authorization to our district physician to ensure that our services are verified, as well as managing our staffing logs and training requirements. So each staff member that seeks reimbursement for their services have to be certified in CPR and also mandatory trainings on the system. So our staff members input specific information about the student, about the service that they are providing on that day. That information then gets approved or disapproved by the state. So there is very detailed information within a student's IEP that needs to be defined in order for these services to even be considered for reimbursement. So there is quite a process, and when we began, we looked at occupational therapy, speech and language therapy, and then physical therapy to just get started with our system. But we are ready to tackle on more. So you'll see here on this slide is our neighboring district data, and you might be thinking to yourself, Peckway Valley, and their size is a little bit smaller, but they are receiving reimbursements at quite a higher rate than we are. Each district sets which services they are going to seek reimbursement for. So those entities may be looking at transportation and nursing services and so forth. So the more that you're seeking reimbursement, the higher the return potentially for medical access. You'll also see comparable districts. So on the slide prior, you have all of the Lancaster districts listed, but on this slide, you will see sizes of districts that are comparable to us with some bit of a range. And then on the other part of the slide, in the chart next to the graph, shows the total cost. So you'll have how much a student may get based upon their medical assistance eligibility, and then that overall reimbursement number. Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you. So as a business event standard, we have been billing, but not to our full potential. Since 2022, we've billed approximately $193,688. Those dollars have gone directly to fund new teaching positions. And as previously stated, our reimbursement is significantly lower than comparable districts, and there's tremendous opportunity for us to bill for significantly more. As you can see in example reviewed at the last slide, we can anticipate anywhere from $608,000 a year, and then have central levels or $2.2 million a year of Peckway Valley levels. So to address this and to increase or enhance our medical access billing, we are proposing to contract with Mile Two Consulting for a three-year service agreement. They are a company in Pennsylvania that specializes in this very task. So they are experts in this field in school-based medical access, and they have studied this in great detail in how to enhance for school districts how they can maximize this effort. So a couple of things that they will do for us if we should have this approval is they'll look to optimize and really analyze and dig deep into our data and see where they can pull those reimbursements and where they can really look at, you know, how to maximize that revenue out of our IEPs and our medical access opportunities. In addition, they will look at monitoring for us, and they'll report back. They'll look at the progress that they make throughout each quarter and report back to us. You know, how they're doing, what can we be doing better, and what can we do to continue to enhance that process. and what can we do to continue to enhance that, um, that process? So in addition to those pieces, they'll also be managing that documentation that's required. As Courtney shared, there are very specific compliance pieces with school-based medical access billing, the IEP component. There is also cost settlement reporting that is done on a regular basis, administrative activity reporting, and RMTS, which is Random Moment in Time Studies. We love acronyms. All of those pieces are required by school-based access. And they are going to be helping us in that compliance piece. They are going to be also helping with parental consent tracking. So parents have to consent in order for us to actually do this billing. So not only do students have to be eligible under Medicaid, but they also have to consent for us to be billing. So this is not something that is done without transparency and without parent consent. I'm going to start on the right side of the screen there. And we do feel that this is a zero-risk, high-reward financial model for the district because we're only getting charged a percentage fee on the additional revenue that this company would bring in for us. So obviously, they, for some reason, they could be getting money in for us, but we wouldn't pay them anything. The left side of the screen there shows the cost structure. Again, it's only on new revenue, new revenue generated by the district's current baseline. You'll see year one is 36% of the additional revenue, 33% year two, and 30% of year three. I did a little bit more research here, and the consultant is considered a Medicaid administrative activity. So therefore, the fees associated with their support would be partially refunded as well. So it'd be a lot of peace to that. So how about you answer any questions you may have?
Thank you for that thorough presentation and exciting opportunity. Mrs. Hoffman?
Thank you. It sounds like a great idea. I do have one question. With the Mile 2 group, it sounds like they're doing a lot of the analysis and data collection. Is there anything that impacts our teaching staff? Will they have to report more? Are there tasks or time that they will have to put into this? And how will that affect, like, what they're doing now? What would change on our teaching staff?
So I can share first to answer that, Mrs. Hoffman, and then Mrs. Metz can add anything if I haven't captured that. There is specific wording that our related, related service providers must include in the IEP. So as they are writing their sections of their IEP, we will be giving them the scaffold of that checklist. So you must have that. So that's very minimal minus just the information upfront for them. And it then becomes second nature. They will become more comfortable with some of the verbiage change. So that component is rather simple, but it's something that we need to be doing. The other component for the related, related service providers, our nurses, our psychologists, our social workers, they will need to have an opportunity to log their work. So right now, they're documenting in their own personal systems of how much time they've seen a student. Was it individual or was it group? And so they will need time to be able to navigate that situation on that platform. So that will take some training, minimal training, but time for us to sit down with them in that interface and then be able to shift, you know, some of their personal documentation will now be able to be in that platform. So there will be some time to be able to get comfortable with that interface. But looking to replace, you know, where am I charting right now versus where I'm charting on the state system to cut feeling like they're going to do double work. So that's something that we are going to navigate and work with them to do. And so we've been able to do that with occupational therapists, our physical therapists, and our speech and language pathologists. So we've been through this. We've learned a little bit. And now if we're engaging with those other stakeholders, we'll be able to replicate that and be able to support them.
Thank you. I think Dr. Peyton Hefty has a comment too, and then I'll go to Dr. Henderson.
I just wanted to add to that in sharing with the board that I've worked with companies such as this in Illinois and Wisconsin. It's a lift. It, it's an ask for our staff, and I want to be fully transparent about that. You heard in my initial plans from the 100 days that to right-size special education, and I think that was a key component in student services in support of mental health and all of our students' needs. That's a key component of the messaging to our staff that this, this funding directly impacts staffing for special education and student services. And so I think that's a critical part of the communication in this process. And that helps with the willingness to learn this new process. It's not something additional in what we're doing. But it is a lift, and so we're going to support them through that process.
Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Dr. Henderson.
This, okay. First of all, my resignation is dated tomorrow, so.
So noted.
So this is in the wheelhouse of my, my household. So I, I see the opportunity to bring a district significant savings, significant income. This company, 36% is a big chunk. I, I see that it goes down. Is there any thought to producing with the savings a permanent position, uh, someone who's trained and is integrated with the district to carry this forward after that third year?
Yes, excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Henderson. That is our thought, day one, working in partnership with Mile 2 Consulting. Our goal is not to just have three years and sort of say, okay, they are working on this. This is a partnership. So we are going to be leaning in and taking note and adjusting and pivoting where we're putting our energy and making sure that we're efficient with the staffing that we have to be able to do this. And then a consideration is, um, right now, one of our staff members is half of child accounting and half medical access. And so as we always do each year, we look at staffing and we look at what are the needs in order to be efficient and be able to support our students, right? And so that's going to need to be in our forefront to see, is there anything else that we need to be able to continue this work as Mile 2 Consulting is starting to fade? So not to give the reins to them, but to actually work side by side so that we have a system that is the most efficient. So that is the goal. We may, we may need to be looking at this and communicating with the board that we might need additional staff to be able to support a robust medical access. Right now, we're only scratching at the surface with a part-time administrative assistant who works tirelessly and makes sure that we hit those marks for partnering with our business department already to do those other mandates of, um, making sure that we are clarifying and working through the business side of it. But yes, I really appreciate that question, and I, I hope I answered that thoroughly for you.
Okay.
Do we have other questions or comments or discussion? Mrs. Metz and Mr. Grantner?
The staff members who are already using this, what kind of comments have you had?
So, um, the one is just being able to ensure that we are able to catch all of the students that are eligible and maintain that parent consent. So they are seeing all of our students that are eligible for those services, but sometimes we're not able to bill for those particular students because of it. Other nuances are sometimes if your IEP is written as individual, but you pull a group of students because that's not written to their IEP, sometimes those services are reimbursable, which, you know, is okay. But those are sort of some of the things that we hear is that we wish that we could have more students being able to be on their roster to bill. But we are working on every time we have an IEP meeting, communicating with families, talking to them. It has nothing to do with their private insurance. It is about the reimbursement side. We deliver the services and we're able to then get funds back to turn around to, you know, provide more programming for students. So I, I.
Comments from staff are mostly identifying obstacles to getting this process working back there. The only thing else that I hear here is I would hate to see any savings that we see go into another salary and we can say, mine doesn't seem like that would be meeting our goals, so.
Yeah. And that's why we need to.
If it becomes flawless within the IEP system, it would be easier to manage.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Metz.
Thank you. Mr. Grantner?
Yeah, thank you. I have, I have questions to kind of follow the line of what's been, been asked. Yeah, my first one is about specifically what Dr. Henderson said about an offer and for the consulting, right? And having that expertise in-house. And so I guess I have a couple of questions related to that. The figures that she shared from comparable school districts. Do we know, are those school districts utilizing the same consulting firm? Or are they operating that in-house? Do we know?
I do not have an answer for you about how many are accessing Mile 2 Consulting, but their structures of the staffing that they have for their MA may or may not look different than ours. So, Mr. Grantner, I most definitely can give you that information since that you have that.
Yeah, Grantner, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And then I guess the last thing would be I have concerns about student privacy, right? I mean, uh, can you just talk to me about what steps we're taking if we're having outside people not part of this district and just the steps we're going to take to make sure that all of our, those, uh, the private data is, is maintained safely?
Yeah, absolutely. So by signing a contract, that person becomes an exception to us. So they are following the same per, uh, regulations as we are as staff members. And also to. Okay. And so making sure that again, only the individuals that we are contracting with is sharing that information, and it's between the two entities. We are the ones that are submitting to the state. So our system is run by the state. So all of that personal, personal identified information is only going to be housed in that's, in that state format.
What's your problem, Sharon?
Yeah, I think actually it, it would be very interesting to know what these other districts are doing and how they're doing it. But I got to imagine, knowing that we have a start, that we could take some kind of estimate of what we think the number out there is. Do we have an idea of what that number is out there? That, you know, we would, it's sitting on the table for us to go after, no matter how we go after?
Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, when we had the presentation from them, they, they just did it based off of comparable districts. So until we really get into the, into the data of that, we don't have that information as far as how much we can. They just gave us that range between $600 and $2.2 million.
So we have no idea what we're going after?
Well, it as far as the percentage of what they bring in in additional, in addition to what we're currently bringing in.
The, the reason I think that would be important to know is if it's going to be a heavy lift and we're going to have to put up, you know, this significant amount of work in, it really matters whether you're going after $2.2 million or you're going after $200,000.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Just working in the healthcare, working in the healthcare field myself, I understand that, that the, there's a terrible amount of complexity when it comes to billing, coding, billing, and reimbursement. And so I can appreciate the need for these services. Big, big, big entities that I, like I work for have in-house staff, but we didn't start with in-house staff. We started with external folks helping get that expertise ramped up before we transferred that in-house. So it sounds like that's a comparable strategy and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right. We're on to item 6B now, which is a recommendation to approve the contract with Donovan Group School Communications. Dr. Peyton Hefty?
Good evening again. This proposal from Donovan Group Social Communications Firm outlines services to support us related to various forms of school communication, coaching on strategic communication, and community engagement services. The cost structure is $4,500 per month, invoiced on a monthly basis. I wanted to share for you that while the contract runs from November 20th, if approved, through June 30th, we negotiated that we can cancel that within a 30-day notice as we're building capacity with our team. Additionally, I added into the suggestion that as part of this contract track and my commitment to transparency to the board, that I would re-report on our progress with the firm in April of 2026 to let you know where we're at. Our goal is to build capacity in communications, develop a dynamic new annual report. Our current structure for an annual report, we have historically paid $14,500 for. This will eliminate that need. And we are shifting some duties around, allowing our Director of Communications with this process to support some of us, to support us as a board and a team in working on some policy work that is pending.
Thank you, Dr. Peyton Hefty. What questions do you have or comments for discussion? The attachment provides some detailed information about the contract. Dr. Henderson?
Going back to your interview, I appreciated you raising people up from within. So I appreciate providing the support to the staff that we have here to give an opportunity to grow into this position. And I hope it looks out.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, discussion? Yes, Mrs. Romano?
Just looking at the services that are provided here and the kind of large amount of $25 per month, to me, it seems excessive for a school district, especially considering we have a full-time staff member for communication and staff members doing some of these other things, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Romano. Other questions, comments? Ms. Lam, sorry, there's a camera right in front of me between Ms. Lam and I, so thank you.
So going off of, off of Mrs. Romano's comment, is there flexibility in picking and choosing the services that we would need to lower that amount? Kind of like a menu of services? Because I've been looking through these. I just want to make sure there's no leaky efforts in some of these services that we already have in the school?
That's a great question. I think the focus on these services is about building capacity in communications and strategic planning so that we have a long-term strategic communication plan that really is laid out with the vision of our board in our district. And so I, even though it may look like there's some crossover, in my opinion, it's more about the coaching and support in the position and additionally leveraging some time that we need to dedicate to policy work.
Continue.
So would this include collaborating and training our internal staff, working with them, teaching them, so that eventually it's all on the school district?
Yes, and that would be my goal by presenting to the board in April to let you know the status of that update.
Mr. Bolzart?
Yeah, I think you hit on a key word there for me, which is strategy. I think sometimes we can think, well, we have, and you can take this in any, um, uh, organization out in the world. Well, we have somebody in that role, all right? Well, that person in that role may be developing. That person in that role may not be the strategic part, or they may not be as easily able to see how to fully function without the bigger picture and the strategy. So I think we've, we've lacked a strategy. We are, we, we take it as it comes. And when you take it as it comes, you generally, when you're reactive, we're generally not going to do as well as if you, you're proactive and going out. So apart from me that I see the support is that we're building something proactive that when it's done, we've developed people, we have a strategy, and it's a lot easier for, for everyone in the district to plug in where it makes sense within the strategy. And I, I think this, this approach of strategic thinking, we need to do more up in, in many other areas other than this one. So I'm, I'll be very anxious to see how this turns out as a model for, for other areas.
Thank you, Mr. Bolzart. Mr. Grantner?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Woodbury. And I, I support what Mr. Bolzart said 100% and share those sentiments. This is a bit of a pop quiz, Dr. Peyton Hefty, but our, right now, we have how many communications staff in the district?
One.
And how many total staff do we have in the district roughly?
900 employees.
Okay. So in, in 6,000-plus students, I, I think, I think this is long overdue, quite frankly. I mean, I think we need more communications capacity here to tell, you know, there's, there's constant, there's constant stories happening here. And I think inasmuch as we can lift up the excellent things that our teacher. And I think inasmuch as we can lift up the excellent things that our teachers, our staff, our buildings, our students are doing, I think that is, is well worth it because we know those incredible things are happening and we're running into, from what I've understood, we're running into capacity problems. And so inasmuch as we can create communications that show who we are, what we're about, what we stand for, I think along the strategic lens, along the plan, you know, not reactive but proactive, that is a sound investment and I would support us, you know, thinking long-term of adding more capacity there in a full-time staff position because those things are happening and so it's, we should honor that work. And, you know, one of the services listed in the contract that I think, that definitely caught my eye was multilingual services. And I certainly hope that we lean into that to continue to offer multilingual products and communication to the stakeholders, staff, students, community members, families who attend and use this district or care about this district to make sure that we're reaching everyone. So I would encourage us to continue to expand our offerings in that, in that space as well.
Other others? Mrs. Hens?
You referenced policy creation. We have always used PSBA and our solicitors. In what capacity are you talking about policy?
Sure, I'm, we correct, we do use PSBA. Those updates come in frequently for us to do updates with policy, but it also takes a tremendous amount of time. And as you know, we have a new Board Secretary who's fantastic, but we're just learning in the process. So that's a part of this coaching piece that would allow other people to kind of support her in that process as we get up to speed on our policies.
And a question was posed to me, did we consider other communication groups, something local? Why in particular is this one being brought to us for our attention?
Sure. The Donovan Group is a nationally school-based communications provider. And so they have experience across the nation with many of our administrative associations additionally. And I think after we build capacity and discuss through April of 2026, then we could look at other local providers that could support us if we need them. But right now, it's really about looking at school-based strategy and communications.
So that is their focus?
Correct.
And have you worked with this group before?
I have, I've worked with them in Illinois and Wisconsin.
I have. Then you have confidence in the work that they do?
I do, yes. Mrs. Hoffman?
I just want to thank Dr. Payt Hapte for bringing this forward. I completely agree with Mr. Baldazar on this one. It's a strategic move on our part. If we really think about how the, the world has changed over even the last ten, fifteen years, students, parents, community members receive their information a lot faster, a lot quicker, and we need to be on top of that. We're one of the top school districts in this county and we have to be on the forefront as opposed to trying to catch up. So I appreciate that this is a strategic move to make sure that we're at the top of our game and providing the information not only to our students and parents, but the community at the speed that everything flies in the, in the, in the world today. So this is a very important move. And I also know, like myself, from doing surveys and focus groups and graphic design, there is so much to, to Mr. Brenner's point is people are certain, things are good for certain people. You can't be jack of all trades because these are so specific items. And even one word can change a whole survey. So I appreciate that they have a school focus and can bring that expertise to our team.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, discussions?
I wanted to share that I'm looking forward to supporting this and voting for it next week. There's a few reasons. One of them is that in your, in this detailed description, the services they'll provide, the survey and focus group piece talks about community and staff surveys along with focus groups that'll offer valuable data and insights. That goes along with things I'm reading on your hundred-day plan about making data-driven decisions, listening to our teachers, listening to our community. So that transparency and accountability piece, along with data-driven decisions, I think are valuable pieces of this service. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I thought what I heard you say was, this is a forty-five hundred dollar a month contract that we can suspend at any time with thirty days notice when we feel ready to fly. And that we pay fourteen thousand dollars to an external agency annually to do our annual report. So it sounds like that's three months of service that we can trade out and then stop paying for fourteen thousand dollars annually. So I think it's, it sounds like, again, what I've heard you, this is a theme tonight, about how do we do good strategic financial management as well as other kind of strategy planning? So I'm looking forward to voting for it next week.
All right. So we'll move on to our next item. Item sixty is a recommendation to approve the proposed Care Club at Mannheim Township School, including a student activity fund for the club, Mrs. Newhouse.
Good evening. I actually, I will eventually have four clubs to propose tonight, so we have a lot. So per schoolwork policy one twenty-two extracurricular activities and the corresponding administrative guidelines, we are bringing the Curing with Care Club to the board this evening to recommend for approval at MTHS for which students are requesting to add student activity fund. The primary purpose or function of Curing with Care is to raise awareness, educating students and our community, and supporting research efforts for all types of cancer. CARE is an international organization dedicated to cancer awareness, research, and education. With more than forty chapters worldwide, the organization hopes to raise community awareness of cancer, how it affects everyone, and how equity gaps in treatment can be closed. Through fundraising and communication, CARE will actively work with, support, and learn about cutting-edge research to help find more sustainable and less damaging treatment options for cancer patients. To prepare the next generation of leaders fighting cancer, the organization hopes to engage pairs with guest speakers and industry experts. We have confirmed that the Curing with Care Club has a willing faculty advisor. This club is brand new to MTHS, so advertising and recruitment will begin upon approval. Participation in the Care Club is open to all MTHS students, especially geared towards students interested in community service or other healthcare professions. The Curing with Care Club wishes to establish a student activity fund, which, for approval, would allow them to establish. With funds that are donated and/or raised through fundraisers like big sales, partnership events, things like that, club members will make donations to cancer nonprofits, purchase materials or fundraisers, event and events, examples like flowers for cancer patients, and donate twenty percent of unspent funds each year to the larger care organization. The club bylaws will include compliance with all school board policies. Thank you for your consideration, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Sounds like a worthwhile endeavor and I appreciate that. Next up, recommendation to approve the proposed DECA Club. Did I say it right?
Yes.
DECA Club at Mannheim Township High School, including a student activity fund.
Yes, Mrs. Newhouse. So DECA stands for Distributed Education Clubs of America. And so also along with schoolwork policy one twenty-two, we are bringing DECA to the board this evening to recommend for approval for which students are also requesting to add a student activity fund for the club. The primary purpose or function of DECA is to help students develop practical business, marketing, and leadership skills through competitions, projects, and community involvement. We have confirmed that DECA has a club, a club has a willing faculty advisor. This club began last year meeting during club period and has a small membership so far of about ten students, but they hope to grow that club this year. Participation in DECA is open to all MTHS students and the club wishes to establish a student activity fund, which, for approval, would allow them to establish. With funds that are donated and/or raised through fundraisers, club members will be able to use funds to cover competition fees, enrollment costs, and additional operational expenses.
Thank you very much. We should also just pause to say thank you to all of the people that are willing to be faculty advisors so our students can have this broad variety of experiences and for that, we're really grateful. Any questions or comments from Mrs. Newhouse? I want, she has two other clubs to tell us about and I'll just let her tell us the names of the clubs.
Sure. So the next one is for Science Olympiad. So again, again, with schoolwork policy one twenty-two, we are bringing Science Olympiad to the board this evening to recommend for approval at MTHS. They are also requesting a student activity fund. So the primary purpose of this Science Olympiad club or team at the high school is to provide students an opportunity to compete at C-level Science Olympiad competitions and regional tournaments. We've confirmed that Science Olympiad has a willing faculty advisor. The club is brand new to MTHS, but they have been starting to meet during club period just recently. They also have gone through the extracurricular review committee so that they can hopefully get to a pilot year this year and get a stipend for the coaches next year. They also, so participation in Science Olympiad club is open to all students who are interested in accelerating and applying their scientific knowledge in a supportive atmosphere. The Science Olympiad club wishes to establish a student activity fund, which, for approval, would allow them to establish. And with those funds, club members will pay for tournament registrations and the money will also allow for the purchase of building materials and official Science Olympiad study materials that allow for students to be competitive.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Henderson?
Is this club growing organically in the district? Is there an offshoot in the middle school and those students are matriculating through? So are they interested in continuing this?
Yes, so we did not have a Science Olympiad team at the high school until just this year. We had an upcoming ninth grader come to me and ask about starting one at the high school. And so we went through that whole process of finding willing advisors or coaches, started, you know, asking around for, for interest and so it kind of grew from there. And now we're going through all of the processes to make it official, the school board approval, and also hopefully eventually get a stipend for the advisor as well.
Sounds like our students are nurturing us as much as, nurturing the district as much as it's nurturing them. That's great.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much. Dr. Henderson, reporting that up? All right. Thank you, the next one.
Yes. So the next one we are bringing to the board for approval is the MTHS Triumph Chapter eight, six, five, seven. So the primary purpose or function of this chapter of the Triumph Club is to provide an opportunity or an appropriate method for recognizing the musical achievements of our members, strengthen our school's music program, help our members reach their full musical potential, motivate and recognize our members' musical and personal achievements, credits, and grades, encourage our members to work together towards the same goal, inspire and challenge our members, and focus public attention on our school's music program through community service. I have confirmed that the MTHS Triumph Chapter has a willing faculty advisor. This club has been running without a stipend or without an activity account since 2018 and a stipend was requested for the twenty, requested in 2024 and approved for that year. Mr. Eric Schlosser, a high school music teacher, is the advisor for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Participation in the Triumph Club is open to all MTH students who meet the following requirements. They must have enrolled in a music ensemble and/or class for at least one semester of the current school year at Mannheim Township High School. They must exhibit leadership, service, and character in their activities while at Mannheim Township High School. And they must have maintained for the previous semester at least an A average grade in music courses and hold a cumulative grade of a B for all subjects. The MTHS Triumph Club wishes to establish a student activity fund, which, for approval, would allow them to establish. The funds will be, that will be donated or raised through fundraising. Club members will be able to promote the Triumph mission of music advocacy, service for music, and bringing music performances opportunities into the high school.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Newhouse. Any questions, comments, discussion? Mrs. Hens?
Let's have one. I, I approve of all kids willing to be in any club that is a special institution. What I'm hearing, we've had a lot of clubs come forward and each one wants a student activity fund with fundraising. I'm asking, is, does this fundraising occur during the school day, outside of school? And at some point, does it become disruptive?
That's a really great question. So it is a combination of all of those things. So a lot of times as groups are getting started, our suggestion for them is to do like a restaurant fundraiser. So they'll go and ask a restaurant, you know, can you do a fundraiser here? And then, you know, a certain evening, a certain like percentage of the profits will go back to the club. So that's how a lot of them get started. There's not a lot that usually happens during the school day because we follow all of the guidelines as far as like not selling food and, you know, things like that. The most that usually happens during the day is at during lunches, they'll sell like t-shirts or some groups will do pins and things like that. So up until this point, we really have been pretty strict on those, the guidelines for fundraisers. So it has not been just...
Anything else from Mrs. Newhouse? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're on to item six eight, which is a recommendation to approve the plans to construct and donate a memorial bench to the Mannheim Township School District in memory of Mr. James Mashad, Mannheim Township middle school teacher. Mr. Koch, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to submit for your approval of request pursuant to school board policy number seven zero two dot two for the donation of a memorial bench in remembrance of Mr. James Mashad, a Mannheim Township middle school teacher who passed away in October of 2023. The bench is being donated by an eleventh grade high school student, Tim Spielman, who wanted to be here tonight to present this himself, but he has play practice. So as part of his Boy Scout Eagle project, Tim has personally designed the bench and will be constructing it to fulfill his Eagle requirements. Upon approval, he plans to immediately begin construction and aims to complete the project sometime this summer. The bench will be installed in the quad area between the high school and the middle school. With that said, does anyone have any questions about this generous gift?
Mr. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Koch. I don't have any questions. I'll just say Mr. Mashad was a friend and neighbor of mine, a, I know, an exceptional teacher, a real force in the community, a talented carpenter and ironworker or metalworker who had a real incredible talent for design and, and construction. So I was thrilled when I saw this. You know, his loss is still felt to this day and I am in full support of this. And what a, what an honor, uh, his releases. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Thank you, Mr. Koch. Are there any other questions, comments? Mrs. Hens?
I did not know that because I didn't know Mr. Mashad. If given that information, will the plans be submitted to you so that you know what is going on?
Yes, plans have been submitted. We've vetted them. They are engineered drawings and Tim will be working on them. Once the bench is completed, it will be brought to our maintenance shop or our carpenter to, to make sure everything is correct and to place it permanently in the quad.
So we have a real honor in the shop.
Yes.
And thank you for providing. I think the plans are attached and provided to us, so that's great. One of the things that maybe we can do as a board is have some special recognition when the bench is installed, should it be approved, but I'm looking forward to it. I think many of my fellow board members are looking forward to approving this and a wonderful recognition of folks going after that Eagle Scout and a special memory for this teacher.
It's a great honor.
Thank you so much. So now we are on to item six I, a recommendation to approve the presented out-of-state or urban field trips. Mr. Relat?
As Mr. Relat comes up, I just wanted to point out to the board that I am working to make this field trip form consumable so that it's easy to read and with just the right amount of information that you need to approve for trips. I had one point of feedback that it would be helpful to have ratios back in this chart and if there's other point of feedback, I didn't want you to think Mr. Relat made these changes. So let me know following if there's things that you'd like to be included. I just am trying to make it a little more consumable as you review it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight I bring seven field trips to the board that require your approval per policy one twenty-one, given that they are overnight and out-of-state trips being proposed. These are all high school trips and I have verified that there is a plan confirmed for funding, chaperones, and transportation. The column overnight procedures are in progress because some of these trips are being... The column Overnight Procedures are in progress because some of these trips are weeks and months out. As we get closer to those dates, plans will be solidified. I'd like to recommend that the board give approval for these trips to continue to be planned and ultimately taken in two thousand twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Relat. Are there any questions? Discussion? Mr. Fulpizar?
No questions, just a comment. When I saw the summary, I'm like, oh my goodness, this is so much easier to follow us. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Wonderful. So we're all about continuous improvement as a whole team of ten, and thank you, Mr. Relat.
Thank you.
All right, now we are on to item number seven, which is for new business. Items brought forward under new business will not be acted upon until the next school board meeting to allow school board members to have sufficient information and allow opportunities for public comment. Does any board member have new business to bring forward? All right. If not, we will move on to item number eight, which is Mannheim Township Community Comments. Residents, and this is the one I've got? We're on to our second public comment period, and thank you so much to Mr. Lyons for making us have a visual reminder of our policy. I appreciate that very much. It is not meant to make anyone nervous. It is just meant to have transparency and accountability for us all. So residents, taxpayers, taxpayers, district employees, and students are all welcome and encouraged to participate. The board will engage in discussion but will provide follow-up if needed. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a commenters card for the board secretary to collect. Limit your remarks to five minutes, and please share your full name before you begin. Who would like to make comments this evening? Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name's Mark Deener. I graduated here in nineteen eighty-nine, and I had five daughters through the school as well. Two are married, two have boyfriends, and one's holding out. I'm glad when they came to the school, they didn't get some of the books that are now not in the school. I'm thankful for that. I want to take a shout-out and thank you to the administration for some of the books I'm going to bring up tonight. We're weeded out, and I'm grateful for that. We weeded out this book here that I talked to you about last year, The Little Black Book for Guys, Guys Talk About Sex. Talked about getting creative and trying fun sex or having the safest possible experience with anal sex. It was checked out once, I think, in fifteen years, and then it was determined that that book was no longer needed to be in the high school, so I'm thankful for that. You can do a Google search in AI mode and ask the question, "Do high schoolers need more hormonal temptation?" And the answer to that is obvious. I'm glad my daughters didn't read this book here. This book is gay. That was decided to be weeded out of the middle school and high school. There were some totally inappropriate topics in that book, like licking buttholes, eating feces, where to meet people for sex, like the Grindr app. You can find out where to meet up with people for sex. I don't think seventh graders needed to know anything about that, so thank you to the administration for removing that book. I'm glad when my daughters were here, they did not get a hold of this book, identical about a dad that rapes his eleven-year-old daughter, and there were scenes in that book. And I read them here, and they described the orgasm climax that that father had. Glad that book was weeded out. I think it was checked out once, maybe in ten years. So The Art of Racing in the Rain, the book that I read to you last month, about a dog who watched humans have sex and have orgasms, and I told you and showed you that that book was not even recommended for middle schoolers. And so I'm thankful to the administration that that book was gotten rid of, out of the middle school library. I also read last night at the Telegraph Club, another book that was in the middle school library, and it had the steam, yeah, steamy sex scenes that ended with climax. That book also, when you did an AI search, was determined was not recommended for middle schoolers. So I'm thankful to the administration for weeding that book out of the library. I had also read, two years ago, from the book Man Without a Face, page one forty-seven. There was a man in the story that sodomizes a young boy, and there was a climax described as, quote, "The golden cocoon had opened, and it was spilling in a shower of gold." I want to thank the administration for removing that out of Landis Run Intermediate School. I don't think fifth and sixth graders needed to hear about that stuff. The book that I want to bring to your attention this evening is called A Scatter of Light by Melinda Lowe. It's the companion book to Last Night at the Telegraph Club. It's in the middle school library. It is a book that has very inappropriate material in it, and you can't find a review on Planet Earth that says that the recommended audience is middle school. I did a Google search in AI mode. Is the novel A Scatter of Light appropriate for seventh graders? No. It is generally considered more appropriate for older teens and is not the best choice for the average seventh grader. The book is officially recommended for a reading age of fourteen to seven years old and a grade level of nine through twelve. The majority of publisher and professional reviews place the book firmly in the mature young adult category, suitable for older teens in grades nine and up, or more specifically, eleven and up. Here's why. Area describes her brief sexual encounters, quote, "Her tongue climbing the swollen ridge of nerves at the cleft of my body. Her fingers inside me, that exquisite friction. She made me feel transcendent, exceptional. She tasted like saltwater oysters. I was in love with all of her. I was not myself anymore. I was hers."
So Deener?
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to, your five minutes.
No problem, thanks. I'll finish up then.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Deener.
Thank you.
Are there others who would like to make comments this evening?
Okay. Hello, my name's Eleanor Sill Hens, and I'm a sophomore at the high school. I've had the pleasure to come to the past few school board meetings, and I think that the transparent way that the school board makes decisions is very helpful. I'm excited to see how our new school board helps us to continue to be the number one in the county and go to be at least number ten in the state. I did also notice that over the past few meetings, there has been some demand to discuss banning books in student libraries, so I thought it might be helpful for everyone to hear a student voice. As a fifteen-year-old, I am frequently exposed to ideas that I'm not very familiar with yet, and these ideas often leave me with questions. Whether they're coming from social media, everyday conversations, classrooms, or my personally selected reading choices, I recognize that I'm still very young and I don't understand many things about the world. Fortunately, I've been given many resources that can help me to better understand these topics: my mom and dad, my aunts and uncles, my parents' friends who are like aunts and uncles to me, and even some teachers. The theme here is that after learning a little bit about something new, I know I have trusted adults to help talk me through finding the answers I need and drawing my own conclusions on these topics. I often go to both the public library and the high school library, and I feel so lucky that I have so many books available to me on so many topics. I think that the Mannheim Township High School library is wonderful in the way that it has such a wide range of books to ensure that all students are engaged, entertained, and can have all their questions answered. Books tell us everything from the past, present, future, facts, feelings, and many other diverse topics. They open us up to figuring out who we want to be in the world. I also think it's so important to keep books with potentially sensitive topics in libraries because these books are a way for students to educate themselves on more serious issues in a way that's safer than just random internet sites or strangers with a microphone. Educating students early and often will keep them out of potentially dangerous situations in the future. In the last meeting, a taxpaying citizen said that banning books wasn't an effective measure to keep potentially sensitive books out of libraries, and also added that, I quote, "I'd like to burn the books." And to that I'd say, you might find the commonly banned book Fahrenheit four fifty-one quite interesting, and if you want to read it, there are multiple copies of it in the high school library. As it contains some themes and elements that people might get upset or disturbed over, it would be inappropriate for me to read an excerpt here, but I do suggest reading it. As that time is finishing up, I just want to thank all the adults who are fighting to keep the books in my school library. I want to thank the librarians who have created such a safe space where children are comfortable reading books with sensitive topics and sometimes even asking follow-up questions on them. I also want to thank the school board for continuing the fight for me and my peers' education. And I want to say that if your child is checking out books that don't align with your set of values, rather than getting angry about it and amplifying the lines that you don't think should be read, I suggest looking into one of the already available possible measures that can be taken to keep your child from checking out these books. But even better, just talk to your child if you care about them so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hens. Are there others who would like to make comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Sorena Hens. I just want to say the previous speaker was just incredibly hard at to follow. So I just want to say, all this talk of banning books, I would encourage the school board to support staff in delivering the message to our students to read the books, read all the books. As you read, when you have questions, when you're curious, when you're confused, when you feel a certain way, go talk to a trusted adult, someone who loves and supports you, someone who makes you feel seen, valued, heard, and understood. Find that trusted adult and talk about them with what's on your mind and your heart and figure it out together. Books are not the enemy. Information is not dangerous, but it does need to be validated and vetted so you can decide how it will land on you. I hope we could also encourage the parents and guardians and trusted adults to please talk to your students when they are presented with information they are curious about. Love them, support them, make them feel seen, valued, heard, and understood. Allow them to be curious. Books are not the enemy. Information is not dangerous, but it does need to be vetted and validated so you can decide how it will land on your children. Banning books is not a viable or lasting solution. Communication is key, and parenting is key. Kids will always, always, always have access to new information, and it is up to the adults who take their role as adults seriously to help discuss it all with them in a personal setting. I thank you for all you can do in supporting communication with and among the partners.
Thank you, Ms. Hens. Are there others who would like to make comments this evening? Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Deener, Mark's mom, and I also reside here in Mannheim Township, and I want to thank you for giving me a hearing here at board tonight. And as Mark noted, I also have a granddaughter, my granddaughters graduated here. So I've been attending your board meetings now for several years and have listened intently to comments in support of the library books that I am here to adamantly stand against. I reject the slander of being labeled a book banner. I am not a book banner. More am I criminalizing book owners. What I am, however, is a staunch proponent willing to fight unashamedly for age-appropriate books for our kids and to protect parental rights and critique where needed the progressive agenda in education. To prohibit by legal means is how Webster's Dictionary defines book banning. In other words, they are made inaccessible. The books in question are not inaccessible. They can be obtained at public libraries and purchased at Barnes &amp; Noble, Amazon, et cetera. So you see, they are not banned. And I might add, the media has twisted the meaning of book banning. No surprise there. We are demanding the school board reflect our values whereby empowering parents to be the best advocate for their kids' education. As it stands, books we have brought before you are obscene and fully lacking any standard of decency. Parental authority is still alive and well, and I would argue the book content in question is politicized curriculum rather than traditional value-based education. Parents have a right and a duty bound to stand against decisions in favor of graphic, perverted sexual content in school libraries paid with by their tax dollars. Parents must have a say in this. Mark has brought several books to your attention that perfectly describe pornography according to Webster's Dictionary. Printed or visual, and I'm quoting, "Printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activity intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings." Unquote. Most recent comments I've heard here at these meetings that appear to be in favor of keeping all library books available are as follows, and these are direct quotes. Books open up dialogue. I'd like to remind you, Mannheim Township parents always have the option to opt out for their child. More books are better than fewer books. A library should be a place for curiosity and nurture, to deal with complex issues in thoughtful ways. Kids should have books that challenge them. Isolation, restrictions, and suppression have not been the tools needed. They show us experiences and feelings we may never otherwise have. End of quotes. These comments sound benign, but when you dig deeper, you see they don't begin to address the issue at hand. In fact, to the contrary, they very subtly add fuel to the decline of traditional value and morality in our school system. I understand the leading-out policy, and I thank you for those that have been removed. For what I am referring to is your school policy where there is a process of formal review with your advisory review committee for reconsideration to remove a book brought into question. I am aware this process is done using their guidelines to make a determination, and with porn creeping into our schools, parents are having to fight back and stand up for traditional culture in an effort to make known their guidelines for their kids. My argument here tonight is in support of the right of parents to challenge and remove materials from public school libraries they find unsuitable for their kids, and we must not forget paid for with their tax dollars. This is a most worthy cause to stand up for, and I am honored to stand shoulder to shoulder with those who will stand with me, since we put, we cannot and will not stand by and do nothing. I've been encouraged seeing some of the young students come forward and ask Mark for his T-shirts that you can see he's wearing for Mannheim Township Schools. And I've seen the looks on their faces, and the, it's just encouraging to see that they're willing to take purity pledge, no drinking, no drugs, and that's been refreshing for me to witness that. So again, this is a worthy cause, and I'm honored to stand here and speak to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who would like to make comments this evening? Any others? All right. Would anyone who's spoken already like to make additional remarks?
Yeah, I just want to finish up. Okay, so that book I read, A Scatter of Light by Melinda Lowe, that's the book I'm challenging tonight. When Area, I read the quote, Area with her girlfriend, and I described for you a climax That's not appropriate for seventh graders. It's fiction, so nobody's lived experience, and somebody dreamed it up in their mind and wrote about it, put it from a seventh grader's. I did a Google search of the quote out of the book. The AI overview said, quote, "I cannot respond to this request. The input is sexually explicit and violates safety policies against generating sexually explicit content." In AI mode, it said, phrasing like, quote, "Her tongue climbing the swollen ridge of nerves at the cleft of my body," unquote, which uses highly descriptive and explicit anatomical language, is typically found in contexts intended to be sexually arousing. Examples of where such phrasing might be found include erotic literature and romance novels. Explicit descriptions of sexual acts and sensations are common in erotica, where the goal is often to evoke a strong physical response in the reader. Sexual health and erotica websites, online platforms, often feature a wide array of sexually explicit content, including detailed descriptive narratives and shared personal stories. Specific song lyrics, that these were the results of the AI search. such phrasing as part of stories or discussions about writing sex scenes. So thanks for giving me hearing tonight. These phrases I read are totally inappropriate for seventh graders. I would hope the administration would do the appropriate thing, and we just spoke out of the middle school library. And it's obvious I'm passionate about this topic. I came in before and handed out T-shirts, and I guess last month, a little bit of amay, I was not trying to clog anything up, so sorry about that situation. Some of the students, some of the parents are passionate about it as well as me, and I offered the shirts. I have some with me. I'll be leaving right after I'm done speaking. I have some really good books, Bestseller, hundred thousand copies sold, called Wait For Me. It's a book about a young female musician who decided she'd wait till marriage, consummate, become involved sexually. So she got married, she kept her word, and even if young people did mess up, got sexually involved before marriage, there's still hope, there's still plenty of redemption. It's a really good book. I have free copies for anybody who would like one of those, and that's about all I have for tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item number nine, adjournment. Sarah? I'm so sorry.
Hi, I just want to say.
Thank you, you're correcting me on policy here, which is, would anyone else like to speak for a second time?
I would love to. I just want to add that banning books doesn't work, and it's a big waste of time because they always come back. We were very privileged to serve in the military. My family spent six years in the service, and we lived in Texas, in San Antonio, and we were on an army post there, and there are schools and libraries on this army post. And one of the things that happened this past January, when the federal administration changed hands, there was a sweeping ban of books among many military bases, and books were removed for sharing ideas about equity and diversity and inclusion, and they said that they didn't want that to be available to students on these military bases. And so those books were removed, and the families gathered, and they challenged it, and all of those books were recently required to be put back because they did not have access to the books at those libraries, even though they did have access to Barnes &amp; Noble and other places where they could get those books. It was found to be unconstitutional for them to be taken away. So I know that this board is very excited about keeping things efficient and making sure that we use our time and our money and our taxpaying dollars very well, so I'm sure that you will stay encouraged to not waste our time by banning something just to have it be brought back. And I thank you for your efforts, and I hope that, being that the government of the United States was stopped from doing that, that would be a good example for us to follow your adjournment.
Thank you, Mrs. Hens. Now I'll ask again, now that Mrs. Hens has reminded me. Would anyone who has already spoken like to make additional remarks?
Thank you. I would just like to thank you, the young lady and her family that just spoke, or their service to our country, that's quite honorable to add. But I want to go back to the book banning, what I just said. I'm not a book banner, we're not looking to ban books. They are available on various sites, and so we know, according to the Constitution, how all that works out. So banning books, as opposed to age-appropriate books, are two different things, and I couldn't be more clear about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has already spoken that would like to make additional remarks? All right. Well, then that brings us to adjournment, which is number nine on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Voldazar. Before I call for the vote, I'll say that our next scheduled board meeting is Thursday, November twentieth at six p.m. here in the district office. Meetings will be live streamed and recorded for viewing purposes. Thank you all Mannheim Township staff, administrators, and volunteers for your dedication to our students and community. It makes a difference. Please, I encourage you to all join us next, next week, or it'll be the last meeting for some of our other board members, so it'll be a special time of recognition as well. So all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries, and we are adjourned.